Joe, I nailed it. I don't receive what it's supposed to do. I don't respond to anything.
Okay, well, welcome back, everyone, to our November 16 business meeting of the Benton Board of Commissioners. We are going to pick up with item 5.1, discussion to consider filling vacant CHC director position. Tracy Martin is with us as well as Carol Budgewit from the CHC board. Or I can lead off. After an extensive process of to search for a new director for the community health centers of Lynn and Benton counties, the Community Health Centers Board has presented this candidate. Candidate is the acting or interim director, Carla Jones. And the CHC board is going to -- would you like to speak, Carol, to present that to us?
Yes. We are asking that the finalist, Carla Jones, be brought to you for approval and to hire her as our executive director.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Carol at this time? Or do I hear a motion? Nancy?
I'd be happy to make that motion. I move to recommend Carla Jones for the position of CHC director effective December 2nd.
Oh, second, Pat?
Nancy made it. Thank you. All in favor, please signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. And congratulations to the CHC board and to all concerned and to Carla Jones herself. Thank you very much to everyone who helped make this process work and look forward to the next phase. So we'll move on now to item 5.2, Timeline Discussion and Update on the Justice System Improvement Program. Nick Kurt. I see we have at least one guest with us for that topic. Welcome, Kurt.
Thank you.
And so, Nick, I'll pass it on to you. And Joe, you're waving goodbye?
I'm just saying hi to Kurt.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Commissioners. And thank you, Kurt, for joining us today. Today's discussion is to focus on considering a bond date other than November of 2022 and specifically May of 2023. I did provide a short PowerPoint presentation, which I will pull up momentarily here. But I want to quickly, before we dive into that, share my screen and show you broader timeline schedule. We have a slew of items that are all kind of coming together and are dependent on each other. So here we're sitting at November 16 with a new bond date decision potentially. We had our executive session to discuss property acquisition. Next week, we're going to be looking at the historic courthouse and discussing whether our direction is to keep the DA in the historic courthouse or look at having him relocated to the proposed new courthouse. We have, I just heard another exec session on the 29th to again discuss property acquisitions. And then on the 30th, we have our South decision, carryover of the previous two meetings, two discussion topics, if there are any. Exec session on the 30th. And then on the December 7th, talk about the new courthouse funding model. And so, you know, the bond date really drives everything broadly from a timeline perspective. The historic courthouse DA decision is one that drives how we, if and how we repurpose the historic courthouse. And that also drives or is relevant to how we fund the proposed new courthouse relative to the state matching funds that we're getting. So all of these things need to be answered in the timeline that's proposed here. State is ready to reengage on the new courthouse funding agreement. And they need to know how many dollars of bonds they're going to be selling, so preparing for that. And then, of course, overlaid on all of this is our property site selection decisions. So a lot of decisions here are leading up to the holiday, through and leading up into the holidays. All right, with that, let me just stop and ask if there's any questions relative to the timeline. It's more of a review, but wanted to make sure we're on the same page. All right, then I'm going to go ahead and dive into the presentation. This is a discussion, as I mentioned, looking at advantages and disadvantages of a May 2023 bond measure versus November 2022. Invited Kurt here to answer any questions. Many of the advantages here were, I pulled from an email that Kurt shared with, I think, all of you and was shared with me. Lots of good reasons to move the bond date. You know, the timing of tax bills and when they arrive, the sheer complexity of a general election. We know that this upcoming election is a midterm election. All of the House seats are up for consideration as well as, you know, a third of the Senate seat. So it's going to be, you know, a busy ballot. Of course, resources required for a general election are far greater than for a special election. And that's not trivial. As Commissioner Malone, I think, once pointed out, the ratio of voters can be as big as two to one. And in fact, that is the case in Benton County. The May 2023 bond date does provide us more time for site selection, research and engagement, all of which, you know, I think are partly, the time would be an advantage. Not that we couldn't get a November date, but I don't think the additional time is going to hurt us. The big disadvantage, let me actually, let me stop there. Sorry, let me just stop there and ask if you have any questions for myself or Kurt relative to the advantages outlined here.
Just one more election for the November 22 is governors. And I have no idea at this point how hot of an item that might be, but it could be another factor driving up participation.
Yeah, Kurt, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to comment that, you know, what Commissioner Malone says is just one more point of heightened voter interest in something other than the JSIP. And the more, the less attention Money Matters get, the more likely voters who are not as informed as we might like them to be are likely just to say no because it's the easy decision.
I didn't include all of the statistics in the fourth bullet there, but there are also a tremendous number of mayoral and gubernatorial races as well in this coming election. So lots of important distractions. And so, the biggest disadvantage is cost escalation. And I want to apologize and yet provide some context. I have not been sitting on these numbers for weeks and weeks. I want you to know that I, in preparing for this presentation, I reached out to DLR Group about a week ago while I was in Wisconsin and just said, hey, you know, here's the old, here's the old schedule you showed me for cost escalation. I've heard you made some pretty dramatic statements about cost escalation on other projects that you're working on. Is this thing still valid? They reached out to John Bales, our consultant, and he came back with what you're seeing, which, you know, frankly, I had about one day to digest and then hit the road back to for analysis. So I apologize for the surprise. It was as much a surprise to me. And in fact, it wasn't until I met with DLR yesterday that I was able to confirm another question based on John Bales's information. It was relative to construction start date. I wanted to make sure I understood he was talking about construction start date and not design date. You know, so the situation that we're looking at is, I guess, not one that's unexpected and yet is staggering with a May 2023 bond date cost escalation of 19.2% potentially. Recognizing this is glass ball stuff. But, you know, right now, the, well, the whole supply chain of consumables, including building goods, is severely impacted with shortages. And don't need to elaborate on that. We've probably all experienced it from tires to refrigerators and everything else. What that means essentially for our current program is, you know, the numbers have changed. Our $50 million correctional facility is now a $60 million correctional facility. And, you know, bottom line, where we were shooting for $100 million bond, it's now $120 million or more dollar bond without making any changes. Again, you know, this could get better. It could also potentially get worse. You know, it's a global issue, so really hard to predict. All I have are the numbers that DLR provided. Mary Ottley asked me yesterday whether, you know, she felt like the DLR was adding their numbers. And my answer was, well, brief hold. I said, you know, one, I have to rely on DLR's consultant who advises, you know, numerous clients. Two, we do know the DLR is conservative. You know, their biggest fear, and they lived through this, is to propose cost numbers, have a bond be successful, and then turn out that the numbers were not sufficient to cover the actual expenditures. I also shared with her that, you know, we went, we went through our initial costing and then we went back. And especially relative to the correctional facility and the sheriff's emergency operations, sheriff's office went through those numbers with a fine tooth comb, line by line. And we eliminated several million dollars worth of costs. So this is not about, you know, bells and whistles. I truly believe we've wrung everything we can out of the numbers to this point. So I think they're as accurate as we can obtain and should consider them solid numbers. Any questions on cost escalation? Pat?
Yeah. Trying to get a handle on this, but people's predictions for the last year, year and a half haven't been very accurate. Every day is, you know, brings new information. So I, I respect DLR's abilities, but I think things could change in our favor going forward. And we're in a unique situation and it's pretty tough to look out very far with any kind of accuracy. I guess the other component that need to consider and similar kind of comment is long-term interest rates when we do go out for borrowing, that has a considerable impact on what we end up paying. And so far, those look favorable. So it's just a tough, tough time to look very far into the future with a lot of unknowns. They could start unloading those ships that are hovering around Los Angeles. And some, some costs could go down. But it's just a matter of getting the product to where it needs to get to. So I guess I would, and the other side of that is Kurt's slide. And in some sense, it doesn't matter what it costs if we don't get a favorable vote from our constituents. So I think that's, I'm leaning towards the May 23 date. And, you know, we'll have to deal with that. But the first order of business is getting this thing passed. And a lot of our emails either say, take more time, get this, get this right, or thank you for taking more time to look at, make sure that we're getting the information we need to make the best decision.
Yeah, I don't disagree with any of what Commissioner Malone. These numbers, you know, they are staggering. They aren't meant to scare you. And just to put it in perspective, the old scale had here at April 2023 start date was 1%. And so, you know, dramatically different. And certainly, there's a possibility of the pendulum swinging back the other way by the time we actually get to construction. And then the April 2024 start was 3.7%. So, you know, again, in that case, two to one. In this case, 12 to one. So you're absolutely right. It is crystal ball stuff. I'm just sharing you the best information that we have right now. And let me just wrap up here and then I'll open it up for more general discussion. The other disadvantage is that Philomath 509, excuse me, 17J is going to, is planning to renew its local option levy on the May 2023 ballot. And I have engaged in discussions with them, asked them if they would reconsider their date. They came back after taking it to the superintendent and said, no. I would, I would enjoy some direction from the Commissioners today if you want us to continue to pursue discussions with 17J to see if they might reconsider. Certainly, at least in 17J's case, they're going out right before their local option levy expires. And so, I did try to impart that we had gone very early with our local option levy, which has a lot of advantages. You know, it's locked in. If you don't succeed, your levy isn't expiring. So I think there are some arguments that we could still make if that is of interest to the Commissioners. With that, let me open it up for more general discussion on targeting a new bond date of May 2023.
Commissioner Weiss, Commissioner Malone, any further questions for Nick or questions of Kurt Bright to avail ourselves of his expertise?
To me, this is a fairly easy choice. And the May of '23, I think our chances of success ballot are much greater. November '22, I can see that as an easy failure, no matter how hard we work and try to engage some of it. Just how much money can the PAC raise to connect with twice as many voters? Especially that a lot of those voters may be pretty skeptical. They're not on the fence, there's a "nah." And I would, so with that said, encourage Nick to continue the discussion with Philomath and say we're, for several reasons, some of which is just giving us more time to do our homework. We are, we're going to go on, you know, if that's the decision, we're going to go on May of '23. And, you know, you can, Philomath can take that information and figure out what their best course is. But this is what, if we decide this, then let them know that we are, we are going in May of '23.
Commissioner Weiss?
Thank you. I guess I have a comment and a question. I would be okay with Nick trying to work with the Philomath School District if we decide, of course, that that is our date. It wouldn't make much sense to try to get them to move their date if we decided to go up against them after all. And so, besides that, what are the, what are the other downsides? If we continue to target November and then we decide later, we still have a little bit of time. If we decide later on to move it, you know, what are the downsides of that versus, you know, if we decide in 2023, it's going to be a lot more challenging to decide, oh, no, wait, we want to actually back up and go to November?
Yeah, it's fundamental to how we lay out our engagement strategy. It's really also fundamental to how much time you have to make a site selection decision. And so, I, and there's probably other things I'm not considering here that Kurt can bring in as well. But really, from a planning perspective, it's much better to know what we're shooting for. I mean, even, even our strategies in preparing for, how we would prepare for a November general election versus a May election, I think, would be different. And so, it really affects, it affects a whole lot of things. I mean, we're talking about bringing on other resources, so it would affect when we would do that. If we bring them on going for November and then we extend, there's budgetary impacts there. So it's really a kind of a, it's not a strategy I would want to pursue unless it was kind of a fallback or not even a fallback, but just, it would be very difficult, challenging.
And there is another decision that's related too. And that is that if we do push it back, we have to address the issue of the courthouse state matching of OCC and, OCC and, I kind of catastrophize. There are three Cs in it, an I funding. And the, and we need to do that sooner rather than later. We know we have a challenge there. So frankly, I think at this point, I agree with Pat. I think we'd be better off moving into May of 2023. The price escalation terrifies me. But we're just going to have hard decisions to make. We know we have hard decisions to make, no matter which way we go, in order to have an adequate correctional facility and a contemporary courthouse that meets the court's needs and all of our programmatic needs, especially for things like retrial and to address behavioral health in tandem with corrections.
And I'll just add, I mean, that additional $20 million is what is really giving me a hard time. I mean, that is what is the hurdle in my mind.
Except their cost estimate, and you'll have to tell me when. They were talking about 1% and 3%. Was that a year ago? Well, that wasn't accurate. And is this current forecast any more accurate than their last one? So, and in some sense, if we, if we don't, if we're very unlikely to be successful in November of '22, the cost is somewhat irrelevant.
Commissioner, I'll also point out that if you decided to delay taking this to the voters until May of 2023 and we were experiencing significant price escalation, the prioritizing of those facilities becomes ever more important because you may find yourself in a situation where you may be dropping off one of those facilities to offset the impacts of the price escalation. So just acknowledging that those priorities of facilities and, you know, which one is the priority to you and which one is second and third, that may have to, or that may become ever more important as it relates to being able to fund those improvements if price escalation does come anywhere close to what they're suggesting. And so, I know that Nick has a timeline in his mind for making other decisions. But the first point that we need to get direction on from you is are we going November of 2022 or May of 2023? And there's a lot of dominos down that fall after that as a result of this decision.
Kurt?
I was just going to comment that I believe that this gives Alyssa an opportunity to go out to the community and say that, you know, even though we're looking at what might be a considerable cost increase on the order of $20 million, that the Commissioners think it is worthwhile. commissioners think it is worthwhile delaying taking this matter to the voters to assure that we have done the best job we possibly can of finding the best site and sizing the facilities properly and to correct emphasis on what's more important and what we're trying to accomplish with this whole justice system improvement plan. And, and, and we, we think this gives us the time needed to do the best job we possibly can for the voters and for the voters to have the greatest opportunity to give their input into making this important decision. And at least that, from my point of view, I think that would be a good way to frame it. And I guess one other comment I might make is that it, it might be advantageous in terms of the conversations with Philomath. It might be advantageous to, as Charlie Thompson once said, you know, kings talk to kings. And, and it might be worthwhile for the elected officials or even former elected officials in that Philomath community to be talking with the school board members.
I would concur with that. So I think that's a good strategy we can pursue.
I think Kurt just called me a jester then. I'm kidding. It's, it's the right strategy. In fact, it's one we have, have discussed as an next step. So, um, thank you, Kurt.
People have said much worse things, so Nick, so that's, jester's really a compliment. Thank you.
Okay, good. And Alyssa, I hope you captured everything that Kurt just said about how to position this, because it was lovely. Thank you.
Yeah, just to tag along with that, I, I think by two and three years with the Ari Bezel Wagner Show, and I think we have, with more time, have the opportunity to do that kind of community engagement and, because she did a great, great job, but that's long enough ago that I think a lot of that information is, has faded and needs to be refreshed. And, and I absolutely concur with Kurt on the message of, we're taking our time, we're gonna get this right. And, and we need more time than with November '22. So, well said, Kurt. I'm, I'm in day 10 of Christmas tree harvest, and, and my thinking's pretty good, but speaking is, I've lost half a step there. But whatever Kurt said was good.
I'd like, and let's see, Rick Crager is on, on the line if he's available. I know he and Mary just recently spoke with the, our, our bond team, and I'm wondering, hi, Rick, sorry to surprise you there. I'm just wondering, Rick, if you have any thoughts on, you know, whether you think essentially a six-month delay from November '22 to May 2023 is, is gonna have any, you know, dramatic impacts on, on borrowing rates and opportunities? I know that's also crystal ball stuff, but given that you had just engaged with the, the bond folks, I just wondered if you had, wanted to invite, you know, your, your insights if any.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Nick. Yeah, so we met with our bond, actually, our financial advisor last Friday, as well as one of the, the underwriters, to get a little bit of a sense. And our focus more was around the $20 million of bonds that are available through the state and trying to figure out strategy-wise how we might be able to move around it as it relates to the courthouse. However, we did talk a little bit about market and kind of where we see things. I mean, obviously, right now, we are at a prime time for borrowing in, in terms of rate. You know, the crystal ball, of course, is, is that there, there really wasn't a sense of, you know, how long is this gonna be gone? I mean, I think all going on, the, all the factors indicate that, you know, it appears that this, we could be looking at low cost of borrowing for some period of time. But we didn't really get into that place, Nick, of, of talking about, you know, out that far. It's, it's just so hard to say right now with where inflation's at, and it's just, it's a weird market. So I, I wish I could provide you all of this information and insight, but I think it is something that we are gonna have to just continue to watch. Bottom line, though, again, you know, we're at a, at a good, good place, at least in terms of borrowing, and, and if that continues, then we would certainly wanna be able to take advantage of that.
Just to follow up on that, you know, I'll need some help on the details, but when we borrowed the 11 million for Kalapua, May of '20, and something, something in there, and that was, we were being congratulated for hitting the bottom of the market, I think, ended up something around 2.4%. And for, I can't remember, it was a 20 years, Joe?
Commissioner, I believe it was for 20 years, and I think it was in a range of 2% to 2.5%. And I believe we actually closed on that in February of 2020.
Okay. So 18, more than 18 months ago, and through all this turmoil and things, uncertainty, that the long-term rates, I assume, were not too far from where they were 18 months ago.
Yeah, yeah, Commissioner, so first of all, I will confirm, from my review of information, Joe's absolutely right in terms of the, the range of cost of borrowing and the term in which we were able to finance where it relates to the Kalapua building. In terms of current rates, I mean, the question is, you know, how much further can it, can it go down? I think the rates are even better at this time in terms of where we were at 18 months ago, which is, I think, amazing for all of us to, to think about. But, you know, getting too close to that point where, you know, how, how much further can it go in terms of, of lower? But, but let's, you know, the question is, how long will it continue to maintain that? Again, and I, and I can also, Nick, for, for purposes of further discussion, I can explore that a little bit more with our, in particular, our underwriters, if they have any kind of sense of, you know, from the economics, what, what it might look like. But, yeah, again, great time to borrow it with my Brad now.
Thank you, Ricky. I think the, the point you made about we just need to keep our eye on it is, is the salient point and probably isn't gonna change a decision relative to bond date today, but obviously, we wanna, we wanna monitor it as we move forward.
Commissioner Wise?
Can I just check in and see what else we need to, to do or what answers we need to give? Because I'm almost an hour late to my seminar now, so.
Yeah, are, are we looking for a decision today?
Yeah, and I, I, yes, that would be helpful. And I, I frankly, I can't recall whether we actually had a resolution when we changed the bond date the last time or if you just provided directions. So if anybody can help me, I, I did not submit a resolution for today. I can come back next week with one.
Nick, I don't remember what we did. We'll have to go back and check that. But I would recommend that the board just give us direction today, and then we can come back either next week or the following week with formal action.
Yeah, I don't think we took formal action last night, so. But I, I support the single bond date until May 2023. We're just gonna have to keep an eye on all the dynamics.
May of '23.
Thank you, Commissioner Malone.
And that is two commissioners, and I will also support it. So three on three.
Thank you very much for your time this morning. And Kurt, thank you for joining. Always a pleasure.
Thanks, Kurt.
Thank you. And with that, we are done with our formal briefing for this morning, and we can let Commissioner Wise get to her next meeting. So thank you all, and we will see you later.